It's normal, that's normal. That's normal steps.
Eternal God and Heavenly Father, we bow humbly before you asking your blessings and your guidance over this meeting. We ask you to bless our mayor and city council and all their assistance. We ask you to bless our first responders, our police department and our fire department. We ask your blessings over every idea, over every plan. We pray that it will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs. When we've done with this place, Lord, see us home safely and find everything that we left and teach us to love one another as you have loved us. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes, District Dupree.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. I always find it joyful. And my public information officer, Mr. Mayor, has told me to keep it brief. And so as not to have my coat tail pulled, I'll just shoot through a couple of things that I have in front of me on my phone to just kind of give you a yearly update on what's been happening in the DA's office, some of our biggest concerns, some of the things that we're trying to push forward. And then I ask you guys if there's anything that you have concerns about that we have not touched on. And so that's me giving you a heads up. So by the end, if you have any questions, please feel free to shoot them to me. So, starting off, the DA's office this year, from the beginning of 2023 up into this point, we have filed 1,166 felony cases. That's 1,166 cases. Usually, we range between 1,300 and 1,400 by the end of the year. And those cases run from the highest level of murder and rape down to attempted theft. And so of those cases that are the criminal cases, we have 65.9% of those are nonviolent crimes. And so let me say it another way, 35% of our caseload are violent crimes. And so I like to kind of point that out because oftentimes the only thing that gets the clickbait in the news media are the violent crimes. That is not the majority of our cases here in Wyandotte County, despite some popular belief. And so with that, the quality of life crimes, the drugs, the thefts and the property damage, those are the majority of the crimes that we have seen in 2023. And quite frankly, since coming out of the pandemic, those have been the highest level of crimes that we've seen in Wyandotte County. And so we've been working diligently with all of the law enforcement agencies across Wyandotte County, of course, including here in Bonner Springs as well, to try to deal with some of those quality of life crimes, not to turn a blind eye to those issues. Because I'm not one to go after the whole broken window thought process. However, I'm just, you know, I was taught and raised in a manner by which, you know, if it's not yours, you don't touch it. And that's how we prosecute. And so we have been working with law enforcement to make sure that we get the evidence to go after those folks. One of the biggest issues that we find with going after specifically theft of vehicles, which tends to be quite a bit of the cases, is ultimately it's very hard to prosecute those cases. Once the crime is done, it's very hard to pull fingerprints off of vehicles and off of staring columns. Though I know CSI on television says otherwise, you know, we can get fingerprints and DNA off the bark of a tree. It's not true. But, point is, we do go after those that we can. Moving forward, we also want to point out here that our office did prosecute, or handle rather, 131 child in need of care cases. Child in need of care cases are by law civil, so they don't fall under that 1,100 criminal. It is civil and it's the child abuse and neglect. So when a parent or a custodial of a child has been reported for abusing or neglecting their children, then it comes to the DA's office to make a determination on if that child should be removed from that home and/or parental rights taken away. And so we handled 131 of those cases. On a good note, I will say that out of the Kansas City region, which consists of Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Atchison, Leavenworth and Douglas County, we are one of the best counties concerning child in need of care. In fact, we had a 50% decrease in foster care, I'll say induction, meaning children being taken out of the home. However, we did have the most use of, I will say, secondary assistance, which is like family preservations, getting parents assistance and in classes and so on and so forth to assist and assess what parents need. What we found is there are a lot of young parents who have young children and they need help. And thankfully, our county has been really big on making sure that they get that assistance. We had 132 juvenile cases that we handled this year up until this point. And again, that folds into that 65-35% that I spoke about earlier. I will tell you, we had about a handful of those juvenile cases that were violent crimes that we did enhance to adult status, though they were juveniles. The statute allows us, if the crime is that of a heinous one, specifically it was murder, we did go ahead and amend that to ask the court to make them or treat them as an adult. And we did that this year a handful of times. We did finish our fifth annual, fifth year annual expungement fair. Expungement is the process of getting your record clear if and only if, one, a judge says it is okay, and two, that by statute you have completed the necessary requirements. Those requirements are that you are crime-free and law enforcement contact-free for three to five years on most felony cases, except for DUIs. Those are 10 years. But if you have stayed out of the criminal justice system, you have completed your probation or your prison stand. And let me be clear, that three to five years runs after you've completed, let's say you had a three-year prison time, you get out of prison, then you have two years of post-release. You finish that post-release. At that point, then the statute says that three to five years runs. So oftentimes, these individuals who come have had no contact with law enforcement for usually about seven to 10 years. The most I've seen is about 30 years. And the elderly gentleman just didn't know that he could get it expunged. The data shows that you are 80% more likely to receive a callback for a job if you have no criminal history. So we like to do our part. As much as we put people in prison for crimes that they did in fact commit, we likewise want to make sure that we give everyone the opportunity to have that second chance when they deserve it. And this year, we had over 100 individuals sign up for the expungement. They actually came up in partnership with the Kansas City Kansas Community College, as well as Unite KC, which is a nonprofit organization, who showed up there at the community college with us. And the Kansas Legal Services, their defense attorneys showed up with my prosecutors to assist in reviewing the paperwork, making sure that they fit the statutory requirements. What did not fit the statutory requirements, sex crimes, murder and the like. Those folks did not get expunged. Those folks were denied even application. In closing, we continue to have our Veterans Court, Youth Court, our Mental Health/Behavioral Health Court that we work with the District Court on. And so I would encourage all of you, as you continue to talk to your constituents, these alternative courts are there to make sure that individuals who have underlying issues, who have behavioral health concerns that are diagnosed with mental health diagnosis that we didn't know they had until they committed the crime, or if they had a drug addiction that led them to do some of the crimes. These courts still hold them accountable. However, it puts them in a different track to make sure that we can deal with the underlying sentence. And that's important to do because the bottom line is, over 80% of the people that we send to prison, in fact, pardon me, 85% of the people we send to prison, they're coming back home to Wyandotte County. And so if we can send them away with the tools that they need, our hope is that they won't end up going right back. Lastly, our community liaison board is still available for citizens of this county. They can go to our website. They can fill out the application. The community liaison board is a board that this administration created to make sure that citizens throughout all of Wyandotte County could have their voices heard and their input heard. They meet directly with me on a quarterly basis. We were in person until the pandemic. And then I told everyone to start coming back and they said, "No, we're staying on Zoom." Now, you can stay home if you want, but we're not going to the office. And so we're still on Zoom and that's a benefit because we're able to meet. Likewise, with these liaison board, I'm able to present the different initiatives and the different things that we're doing in the office and get their thoughts and concern of, do they believe that it would be beneficial for our office to do? And they are very candid. The newest liaison board, which is what I want to leave you with, that we have created, is the Victim Liaison Board. And that board is going to be consisting of individuals who have come through the system as victims and/or survivors of crime in our community. Their case will have been completed for some time. But likewise, with those who are, those who deal with trauma and trauma-informed care, who work with victims in the system so that they can impact our office on how we can better utilize what we do to better impact victims and survivor of crimes while they're going through it. Now, he hasn't stood up, so I'm good. Here's the conclusion of the whole matter. Fentanyl is a serious issue. And if I were to throw out data and numbers and so on and so forth today, it would all focus on fentanyl. We have worked with the federal partners, with the local partners. We're going to schools. We're going to neighborhood watches. We're going to churches. And I encourage you all to encourage your folks to reach out to our office. We have created a 15-minute video with a Captain Diaz with the Kansas City Kansas Police Department. And that 15-minute video details what fentanyl is and how one little small package of it is killing over 300 individuals, just with one package. And we are going after the dealers. And we're seeing it all across Wyandotte County, including right here in Bonner Springs. And it's important that we are educated on what it is, how to stay safe, but more importantly, how to make sure that our kiddos are aware of it. Because now they're making fentanyl as a form of Skittles. They are utilizing fentanyl powder and they're putting it on marijuana. So individuals are thinking they're smoking marijuana and they're dying, okay? And they're cutting fentanyl with horse tranquilizers, which prevents the, for lack of better terms, the antidote from working. And so it's a very evil cruel world. And so we're doing our part and going after these individuals, getting treatment for those who need it, but really trying to use those folks to get to those dealers. I have individuals right now who I've charged with the murder of individuals based off of them selling them fentanyl that they utilize. And that is becoming a more pertinent caseload that we are seeing and that we are pushing. And not everyone is doing it, but I'm of the mindset, when kiddos are dying, we need to do something different. And so that is the conclusion of my overview. Hopefully, I didn't hold you long. But please, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, District Attorney. I appreciate that. And I really welcome you out here anytime and appreciate you coming on a regular basis. We'll go ahead and ask, is there any, any questions that anyone has? Please?
Yeah, I might, just real quickly, you mentioned something about Veterans Court. Did I hear you correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is the purpose of Veterans Court? Is it because of potential PTSD and those issues that might?
Yes, it literally is because of that. Some of what we find is many individuals who are veterans, you, addiction falls into that and self-medicating concerning PTSD as well as other trauma that they never dealt with. And/or homelessness that becomes a part of some of those crimes that we see. Many of the folks who are breaking into homes, empty buildings and so on and so forth are veterans. And many of them are dealing with that PTSD and have said, "I don't want to live in a house." And, but they continuously get arrested for these felony crimes. And rather than just stacking them up, the focus is through our partnership with many agencies in the Kansas City region to get them connected with a peer to assist them with those underlying issues versus trying to send them potentially to prison.
I appreciate that. That's a kind of good idea. Veterans, they serve the country and then come home and sometimes they're just kind of abandoned. The expungement. Now, are those who apply for expungement, do they have any cost themselves? Do they have to pay for it? Or are there resources for them to, to look out to, to consider to help them with that process?
Thank you for that question. And the answer is no, through the expungement fair. I will tell you one of the reasons why this administration started the expungement fair. As a private attorney back in the day, I would charge anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 to handle an expungement case. And what I found was, it was those who were connected, those who were, had financial means that would come and utilize my services for expungement. And so I wanted to create a process where the, you know, the everyday citizen who didn't have $1,500 to spare could also get that second chance, right? It's a catch-22. You need $1,500 to hire a lawyer so that you could potentially get a job, so you can get $1,500, right? And so when you can't, then you go and commit a crime. Okay, but you see the point. So we created this to get rid of that $1,500 desire or need for a private lawyer. That didn't make me any friends because lawyers was like, "That's my money." But that went away. And then the court says that you have to pay a $200 filing fee. We were able, through our collaboration with the Kansas Legal Services, to get a grant that paid for that $200. And so we took care of the attorney fee by putting attorneys in place and we took care of the $200 filing fee by getting the grant. And so through that expungement fair, there was no fees that was necessary for individuals to pay. Now, you can get an expungement or apply for it year-round. Now, if you don't do it through that expungement or through the grant process, pardon me, through that process, then you still have to pay that $200 fee to still push against the $1,500 for attorneys. I've put the expungement paperwork, application and how-to-do-it-yourself on our DA's website. Again, it didn't make me friends, but so that they wouldn't have to worry about hiring a lawyer. They would just have to pay that $200 outside of the expungement fair.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And then I'll just leave with a little bit of an anecdote. You were talking about CSI. My daughter is a forensic toxicologist. And when she went for her master's, the very first thing they said at one of those classes is, "Do not watch CSI." And with that, I'll pass on.
Thank you, sir.
Of the 100 expungements that were applied for, do you know how many were granted?
At the time that I made this PowerPoint, 49 were. And so last year, I will tell you that, this is the fifth one. So on average, every year, about 75 to 80% of them are granted by judges. The only time that they're not usually is when there were financial responsibility that they hadn't paid restitution to the crime that they did. So the judges usually say no until the restitution is paid.
So some of those are still in process at this time?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The video on fentanyl, is that available?
Yes, ma'am. It is. It's available to everyone and Mr. Carter will get it to your governing body, Mr. Mayor and whomever he works with to give to everyone. It is, it's on the DA's Perspective. Thank you for the opportunity to throw a plug there. The DA's Perspective is a YouTube channel that our office sponsors to educate the community and to educate folks about what we're doing, but also what are some of the things that they need to be aware of. And so on the DA's Perspective YouTube channel, that video is there.
All right, because I just thought the schools might.
I did send them out to all of the superintendents and to all of the schools. And so I will tell you that it was sent out, Mr. Carter, six months? Three to six months ago. And I just had a meeting with my first round of high school principals. And though it was given to all the superintendents and the district level, it hasn't trickled down yet. And so now Mr. Carter is contacting all principals for middle and high schools to make sure that they have it individually. I know a little something about bureaucracy and I'm sure they have a plan to get it out. But we want to make sure that it gets in the hands of each principal. So thank you for that. How are we doing, sir?
Thank you for your service. Just to connect the dots, I remember when you were running for your position, visited the church right across the street and it's been a few years back.
It was, and I remember.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations. A couple of things. One is, when we talk about veterans and stuff, I think mental illness is a serious problem. And having the resources to, or facility to make sure that, you know, we can, sometimes imprisonment is not necessarily the answer, but it's put them in the right environment. And I think that's something that we need to look at. I know that's probably not a decision or you can't necessarily probably direct us towards anything at this particular time. That's probably for somebody else, but I just want to acknowledge that. And one of the other things is, I think there's a growing number of kids with autism, Asperger's. And I think it's important, do we have, like, and maybe this is something for the chief or for the mayor, that is there a program in place that our police officers are being trained that they can recognize this stuff and spot it out, right? Because obviously, your interactions with somebody with special needs may be a little different than someone without. So I was just, is this right? I would imagine that the numbers are probably small, but it's a concern, right?
So, couple of things. I'll start on the tail end first. There is not a specialized training. Now, they have, law enforcement does have CIT training, which deals specifically with how to deal with individuals who have an underlying mental illness or issue and de-escalation. So to recognize certain type of diagnosis that are out there. Which leads into, right, that first one. We do have a mental health court, which we call a behavioral health court. But that is the same thought process behind the Veterans Court, dealing with that underlying issue. The data shows that over 40% of the folks that are in our county jail has some type of diagnosed mental illness. And so we are aware of that and we're focused in on trying to figure that out with our collaboration with the different institutions, both locally and throughout the state. What the goal has been is to connect these individuals with different collaborative resources that can help them. And what we found is that many of them, once they get in custody, we find that they already have a doctor, they already have a therapist, but they have, you know, just stopped connecting with them. Hence, they get off their meds and then they turn to heroin, then they go break in stuff. And so we are looking at that and giving them diversions and opportunities to assist. But there's more. Lastly, concerning autism and quite frankly, intellectual disability. That is a huge thing that law enforcement in the criminal justice system is just now beginning to look at. The, there is an organization that my office is in connection with. I served on their board, National Organization of ARC, and they deal with intellectual disabilities to try to figure out how we can make intellectual disabilities as much of a priority in training as mental health, right? And for those who don't know, right, you have mental health and then you have intellectual disability. There's, and so you have training that has taken off for mental health, hence the mental health court and the CIT. But then when it comes to, you know, ADD and things of that sort and autism and so on and so forth, many people don't know what that is. They don't know how to recognize it. They don't understand that there has to be a de-escalation issue or training in that process. But there is an ongoing conversation. And the biggest part of that is right now happening in Douglas County, where that organization is pretty big in Kansas for Douglas County. And we're trying to pull them into Wyandotte County. So it is on our radar, but no, it is nowhere near where it should be in comparison to mental health. No, thank you.
I appreciate the update. And I was just going to make some comments about the resources and opportunities for rehabilitation and how great that is, that you have these resources available for folks with mental health or PTSD or whatnot. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
The only question I have yet to add is homelessness. I know our community is impacted on a rare occasion, as well as the whole of Wyandotte County is. Do you, are you seeing more needs or issues associated with that?
We're seeing, I won't say more, but it's been steady. We have not had a lot of homeless folks that we are charging. And I think it's because it's such an issue that our law enforcement across the board know the folks and recognize who they are. And so they're real reluctant to send actual charges to the DA's office. And so we have worked with organizations, specifically, I'll tell you, downtown, there's Avenue's of Life that's right there, that literally feeds the homeless folks right there on 7th, across from the courthouse. And so we're seeing a lot of the community organizations out here, oh my goodness, forgive me. Who's, you just gave her a big award. What's that? Yes, there you go. And so they have been working diligently to likewise assist in dealing with this. But we have not charged from seven years ago what we were charging in bringing these folks in. It has decreased, but the problem is still there.
I know Lawrence is continuing to have more and more problems. And I can see those individuals that are on the fringe having, being victimized very easily and those concerns need to be addressed.
I will keep that in mind. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me. Thank you, folks. I truly appreciate this opportunity and hopefully I'll still be invited for another update.
I'm sure. As far as I'm concerned, always.
Aren't you retiring or something?
There you go.
Thank you. Am I free to leave?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Take care. Be blessed.
Thank you, DA.
Next, we have opportunity for citizens to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Please. Come forward and state your name and address.
Kim Hilton.
Yes.
Address 498 South 138th, Bonner Springs. And the reason I'm here is because we've lived there for about, going on six years. And I just started doing the bills, because George has always done it. So I opened up the bill, my, the water bill, and I'm like, "Oh my gosh, did I do something wrong?" Because instead of being average $138, it was $620. hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And I thought, you know, what did I do, first of all? Should I hide this bill? No. Anyway, um, so my concern is that. And so I have talked to a couple of people. I went down and, uh, Heather and Tilly in the, uh, water department, very nice. And, uh, I wasn't angry or anything, but I'm a little bit concerned because that's a huge, uh, amount. And, and so we've never had, you know, and across the street it went from a hundred and some to fourteen hundred. And so I've got some neighbors, we're kind of panicked. I don't know where everybody is tonight, but here I am. Um, and so they have, um, when I went down there, they're like, well, we can assure you that that is correct. And I'm, so how do I know that's correct? Number one. I heard, you know, and they, they said that they had replaced the meters August two thousand twenty-two. Um, and so my question was, and, and they said, well, you were, you've been under billed. Okay, all right, we've been under billed. How far back were we under billed? And, uh, nobody could tell me that. So that was a little bit of a concern. Uh, I've worked in a practice, uh, doctor's office for thirty-three years and that shouldn't be a real hard question. I don't think so. So I said, how, how far back were we under billed? And they couldn't tell me. So, okay, how much did you add on to this bill to make up for it? They couldn't tell me. I have since then talked to some other people and what I heard, this is all just hearsay, you know, um, there's three people that checks the meters in Bonner. Two of them were doing the job and one did not. And unfortunately, I guess the one that didn't do it was on our side. Not just, uh, there's several people in our neighborhood that have not been affected, but then there are several that have. Um, so it would be us. But in five and a half years, us, over six hundred dollar water payment, water bill, and I know things go up, I'm not, you know, everybody knows that. Expect that. Uh, but that's quite a bit. And so I guess I just don't understand, um, why I can't get those few things answered. Number one, when did you find out the problem? When was it? Did you find out a long time ago and just now decide to go ahead and tack it on to this month's bill? Um, that's what I wanted to know.
There, there's been some continuing issues and, uh, you, you have pretty much all the information.
Oh.
Sean, do you have any specific as, specifics as to how long the bills were misread?
What we know, um, was it August was the date that you were given, uh, twenty twenty-two? We switched the meters, so there's about nine hundred or so meters.
Mm-hmm.
That are new, put it that way.
So I got a new one.
You have a new one.
Okay.
Total, there's about thirty-two, thirty-three hundred meters across the entire city, one for, one each resident. The ability to read that meter electronically, um, stopped.
I heard that. Bankruptcy.
Yeah. In December.
Mm-hmm.
So the last time that we were actually physically able to collect the data digitally, uh, was December. So since December, those have been manually read. So somebody's had to physically go out, pull the lid off of your meter, read the number on the dial and then report it down and then.
Sure.
There goes the process.
Mm-hmm. I know how to do it.
Yeah. So that's, um, there's, those are the two ways to do it.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the timeframe. We know what the meter was when it was installed, it was zero. We know what it is today.
So it was zero in August twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
We know obviously what's been, um, billed or charged over that same timeframe versus what has actually gone through the meter, what it reads today.
Okay. Do we know if the meter is correct? Because how come all of a sudden I'm using a whole lot more mu- water now? I mean, I, I know price increase, but the amount of water should be the same. I mean, pretty dang close.
To your point earlier, I think if it was being read physically month after month after month, that's, I think, been brought, um, to our attention and our concern is whether or not that was being physically read or estimated, um, for those months.
Still don't come up to six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
No, but if you look at what your usage is month over month, over month versus what the meter's reading today, um, versus what your bill, there's the difference. So you were, as.
So was the old meter not reading correctly?
Your one prior to August?
Yeah.
That I, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, seems kind of odd, doesn't it? The new meter reads a lot higher than the old one?
It's not reading higher, it's just a question of whether the meter was being read, physically read by an individual.
Since two thousand eighteen?
Since two thousand, the beginning of two thousand and three. I don't know what your.
I've got a lot of bills here.
Yeah, I don't know what your, your bill was, but I think if you've talked with the finance department.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I have copies. Oh, okay. So how much was tacked on to this month?
I don't know.
Okay.
So that, that you were billed an under amount, obviously.
Under billed?
Yeah, for, uh, a period of months.
Okay.
Then when this was corrected, you received a bill for that portion of the bill that wasn't billed before, the overage of that. You were under billed before and used more than what you were being charged for and paying for.
Mm-hmm.
And so the, the amount now is for that amount that was not billed and not paid prior.
So what was that then?
Since the beginning of the year, it sounds like, December of twenty-two.
See, I just don't think that's really, you know, I understand too. Um, if you, if you make an error, okay, to, that's quite a bit, a hundred and thirty-eight to a hundred, you know, six hundred and twenty, that's pretty, that's pretty big. Um, number one, how do we, how do we fix something that there was a mistake? Communication would have been very nice rather than opening it up on a Sunday night and going six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's a big deal. Uh, and, and I, that, my big thing is, those are simple questions that we've been asking for, you know, weeks. I've been going out and checking the meter, um, and then watering the cows and then going to check the meter, you know, so I do know how to do it. Um, I don't know, has somebody been held accountable for anything other than we have to, we have to play catch-up because somebody has made mistakes all along?
Yeah, it's very unfortunate that there was.
It is.
Impact to everyone.
Great.
Yeah, everything, we're doing everything we can.
Okay.
To rectify it.
Right.
The, one of the things that is happening is these new meters are going to be able to be read electronically.
Okay.
And cut out that possibility of error. So we're trying to correct those concerns. Um, and the, the under billing, uh, as nice as it is when you're receiving it, unfortunately didn't cover all the usage that was occurring.
Uh.
Whether the, the previous meter was reading accurately or not.
Right, it makes me wonder, right?
Well, there, there's a good chance it wasn't.
Right.
And that's why they were being replaced, twenty-five-year-old water meters.
Uh-huh.
Have concerns. And so, uh, I don't know whether yours was incorrect or not, but that, that's the idea. That's why we're going across the whole city and trying to replace water meters. Unfortunately, we had this problem in the middle of this deployment of those, uh, electronically read meters. The meters are very accurate now.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay.
Extremely accurate.
Well, that's good to know. So we've been under billed for almost six years.
I'm not a water meter expert, but from what I've been told, the new water meters are extremely.
The ones we're gonna get or the ones we have?
The ones you already have, not everybody has.
Okay. So basically, I'll go back and report to the neighbors, what? Your bill's fourteen hundred?
You were under billed.
Have fun paying it.
Yeah, you were under billed. Uh, talk with Tilly at the finance department if you need, um, have concerns with paying the bill. It was, I don't know the exact number of months that it was under billed, but that's the reason it's so high.
Mm-hmm.
Your average water bill goes up and down over the course of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes when it's the same all the time, you're not seeing those additional amounts.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I have all of them. I mean, it's a big difference, big difference.
Yep.
So, but it's just kind of weird for, it's just gonna cost a lot more to live, live here in Bonner Springs than it did.
It.
Because that's a big difference.
A big effect, big impact.
Yes. Uh, the biggest, one of the things was, well, you water your yard. Sure, we've always watered our yard, though. So I don't know, just the little, all the little, the, the excuses without getting, um, the correct answers, a little disappointing for everybody.
I would refer you.
Uh, you know, we'll pay the bill, of course.
To the, um, water, or the finance department, they can assist you with those bills.
Sure. All right, that's what I needed to know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else that would stand and like to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda, please come forward.
My name is Dan Wilson, also live in Lee Valley. What she just said to you is pretty much what I'm gonna say also. Did take the time to type all this up and put it all in perspective. Pretty much what she said is what I'm gonna say. But utility companies should be held accountable for what happened. And they've put everybody in a financial bad situation. Why should we be in that financial situation and be hit like that? People that are struggling now to have a job, people that are retired and can't come up with that money. But I want to read what I've written down to just kind of category everything, what happened to me. And I, uh, I'm the, uh, in charge of the HOA at Lee Valley. And the reason why I'm here is because my water bill was, and several other people in our subdivision, is higher than usual. Mine, for example, my water bill in August was only a hundred and thirty-eight seventy-two and it went up almost three hundred dollars more in my next bill. Again, one of the residents complained to me that his bill for the previous month was one forty-one ninety. In August, shot up to twelve hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents a month of September. That's more than a thousand dollar increase and no leak in the water line after it was checked by the utility company. Mr. Chuck Staples, administrator of the water utility department, explained to me that the meter remote company went bankrupt, that caused the meters to malfunction. Problem is, the utility company did not inform their customers ahead of time of the issue. Everybody, like she said, just gets the bill. Again, the utility company should have warned everybody, hey, we have a problem. And they didn't. They couldn't really explain how they came up with accurate readings also. Later on, the utility company sent out people to go out and check the meters who weren't meter readers and was told by their boss to do whatever they could. Seems odd, you're not a meter reader, you don't know what you're doing? Dog and pony show, basically is what happened to cover the backside. Twice, my meter was red. They sent somebody out to read it. Both times, they went to the wrong address. I lived on terrace, they were going to street. How educated is that person? They told Mr. Staples, my water was leaking. That's why I had a big bill. They went to the wrong address. Had them come out again, third time. Had to explain to them, you're at the wrong place. They read the meter, we're sorry, you don't have a leak. So I got Matt back with Mr. Staples and I asked for, I said, the burden of proof lies on you, not me, it's on you. I asked for a hard copy of the bill, how they came to it. Break it down, show me. I'm entitled to that. Again, they can't. So that leaves doubt in my mind, they really don't know about their problem and how it's there, it's just there. You read the meter from this point, you read the reader from that point, and it all adds up and here's your bill. Again, they don't know how far back it goes, they don't know nothing. The only concession is pay your bill and we'll let you make payments. That doesn't help us at all if, if we're struggling. A lot of people can't even pay their, their dues out there. And they get hit with a thousand dollars to twelve hundred dollars more for one month? Unexplainable. So, um, I did talk to Heather that's there, that handles things, very nice person, and she did hand me over to Lily, who I went ahead and made a payment so they didn't shut my water off. And then rather than fight and argue, I had to set up payments to do that. But I said, I'm paying this in retaliation, basically that, you know, I don't think this is right. And I asked, uh, Mr. Staples if he would send me a hard copy and information because I felt like I'm gonna hire an attorney, I'm gonna have him check into it. And I don't have a problem with that. But I, I want hard copy, I want them to explain to me where it's at. Like any bill, you get a bill, you wanna know what the bill's for, you should be entitled to that, they should be able to explain that to you. If you're not satisfied, you gotta fight it. And I'm with her. Uh, we weren't told ahead of time, who's hailing all this stuff? Then you send people out in the, in the street and, and read meters that aren't meter readers? And why I know this, because I asked the guy that was there reading the meter. He goes, I'm not a meter reader. They just told us, come out here and do what we can do. Do what? What can you do? What, what are you out here for? Dog and pony show. I worked for the unified government for twenty-five years, worked in wastewater treatment management, and we read meters. Some did, some didn't. They had a list of what the last meter reading was and because they're pressured into getting so much work done in a day and they can't get it all done or they get chewed out, they just write down anything close to what the average was the previous month. That's what I think happened here. I saw it, I witnessed it, I worked here for twenty-five years. If I said anything, I got in trouble. I was insubordinated. Don't know what's happening here, sounds like the same scenario. How hard is it to read a meter? Not hard at all, you look at the numbers, you write it down. How long have they been doing this? How long have the person that's been hired to do his job did it wrong and made us suffer for that? Who's accountable? All the way up the ladder for the people that didn't check these things? And then come back and say, well, you owe the money, point A, point B, it's all real easy to figure it out. I, I just don't think that's right. And I think it should be investigated more. And I feel like I should be able to get a hard copy of my bill, how they came up with it. Because I will take it to an attorney and then I'll have him, if I'm right, or the city's right, or if this is the right way to do it. But there is a lot of people in our division that's hurting right now. And we can understand thousand-dollar water bills, it's crazy. If you got one, would you just pay it? I don't think so. I think you'd ask questions. And I think that you would want an answer. He said, we don't know, we don't have an answer.
As I, I do know, um, some of the city council has been impacted.
Yeah.
And, uh, they have worked through those same issues and the answers that we have are the same I gave to Ms. Hilton. Um, the, uh, there were errors made in the manual reading and, uh, the new meters are, uh, in place, but the electronic reading is what is, was the downfall, caused that? And the amount of time I'm not sure on, those are the, the facts that I know.
Yeah.
And passing those along to you.
Yeah. I just wondered why it, why, when they knew all this, they didn't notify the people in a letter or something with the bill, who's ever responsible for that? So we're not all here arguing about it. We, we were, you know, told in advance, but no, you wait till the last minute or you don't do anything, you get all these calls flooding into City Hall. You know, this is my bill here, I don't know how far you can see, but my bill was pretty level throughout the whole year and then shoots way up there. That should raise a flag. Who does the billing? Should have raised a flag on all the other ones, but nobody paid attention to it. So we get the bill and see, what the heck? And no leak? Pudding's right there, explain to me why it shot up so high, all of a sudden. I got the explanation, I trust, but I verify. And I haven't been able to get verification, concrete enough to make me realize you're telling the truth. I don't know, I don't think anybody else here knows. And I don't think we should have to pay that. I think they should, you know, take the blunt of it, not us.
I appreciate that, I do know that the amounts billed reflect the amounts used.
So they say.
Not over, right, and that's, that is exactly right.
Yeah, so they say, but they can't prove it. He said it, we don't know, I don't know. Chuck Staples don't know. Everybody I've talked to, City Hall says, I don't know. How am I supposed to know? How am I supposed to trust what they say? I'm the one, or all of us have to pay it. But you're not responsible to give us a right answer. If I used it, sure, I should pay for it. I'm seventy-two years old, I've never paid a water bill like that, I've never had that happen to me before. And if this is the first time this has happened, I think they should rectify it and say, it's our mistake. Because if I make a mistake, I gotta pay for it. So, that's my issue. And I hope that you guys can sympathize with what we gotta go through with hard times right now. And reconsider very hard about what happened. And there's a lot of mistakes that they made, a lot of mistakes I made. That somebody should be accountable for that, not us. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else that would like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move ahead with the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the October ninth city council meeting. The claims for city operations, and an interlo, I'm sorry, intergovernmental services agreement with Lenexa to offer combined senior center trips and opportunities in 2024. Anything to be pulled by the staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon, vote please.
McMahon?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to new business. The first item in new business is the rezoning, the BSRZ-0123 zoning change from A1 to R3. For east, the eastern portion of 300 South 130th. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mark Lee, Community Development Director. Yes, we're here this evening to look at a rezoning change, ordinance is front of you, along with staff's report, along with some minute excerpts from the public hearing at the planning commission level. It is the eastern half of 300 South 130th, which is just north of the Academy Bank. There's a, more or less a pond or a basin in the middle of it that will kind of separate where it's being zoned. Again, there's an exhibit that shows it as well as the legal description.
Very good, you mentioned this was a public hearing issue at the zoning?
Yes, sir.
Due to it being a public hearing, that is a quasi judicial determination. And because of that, we are unable to accept additional public comments at this juncture. And ask any of the city council members to disclose ex parte communication as required. I do want to make note that we've received comments on several other public opportunities here at city council on the public record concerning this issue, and they're a part of the public record, as well as several emails from Mr. Paul Reese, Ron Johnson, and the Vits are duly noted. Any other city council having received any communication considering this item? Please?
Besides the ones that mentioned, I did have a conversation today with Mr. Rick Mullins from the school district, just to verify some information that I had heard about, heard last year, and just to confirm that that was true. So, no opinions on one way or the other, we shared no opinions on the project. I just wanted to ask him in regards to the school system.
Paul Reese, Ron Johnson, and the Vits.
Brad Landers.
Brad Landers.
And Brad Landers. As an email? Any others? Seeing, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, rezoning BSRZ-01-23 zoning change from A1 Agricultural District to R3 Multifamily Residential District for eastern portion of 300 South 130th Street.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens, we'll start down here with public comments, sir?
Running out of people here. Real quickly, they're talking about only rezoning, rezoning the eastern portion, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, the western portion will not take on that new zoning if they decide they want to do something there, or they would have to come back in and file for another rezoning on that western portion, correct?
Yes, the legal description is tied to that half, they're actually moving forward with doing a lot split. That'll be coming soon too, to physically divide that property.
Okay, that's good to hear.
What's the point of that?
Oh, go ahead.
What's the point of a lot split?
Well, there's some technicalities and, well, it doesn't, it's not included in their plan, in their initial plan, the other portion. They're working on that eastern half right now. And then, there's been talks on what to do with the western portion, whether to downzone it, or whether to, how to kind of flow that into the neighborhood that's existing.
So that would allow them to have a different zoning for that piece of?
Could, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's okay. And that kind of then leads me to the next question, is that the traffic study that is being required as part of this change would only include the current project they've got? At the time, if they decide to move forward at some point in time, rezon that western portion, will another traffic study be required? It could have an impact.
Right, they'll be able to pull portions, sorry about that, they'll be able to pull portions out of this one to probably utilize with intersection data and stuff like that. But if this project is constructed and is there for years before they decide to do anything with the other portion, then the numbers could change and things like that. Obviously, street layout more than likely won't between now and then, only so many places to put the streets up there. But yes, they would be required to do another one.
Okay. I'll just mention a couple of things real quickly, the reason I reached out is, some of the comments that were made, I wanted to kind of, kind of address those a little bit. One is about the, worried about the overcrowding at the schools. One, that's not a city's position, that's, that's a school and a school administration as well as school board. But, a comment that I had heard last year from Dr. Rumgarh. And then I followed it up with a question with Rick, Mr. Rick Mullins today. Is that there has been a steady decline in the attendant, or I should say, the enrollment at the schools for the last seven to eight years. It's not dramatic, but there is capacity, it's not like adding some additional students is going to cause any issues at the school system. Second one is, has to do with, I know there was a big concern about impact on fire and police. Any development, when Deerfield was built, when Cedar Ridge was built, Cedar Springs, the subdivision I live in. Any of those subdivisions, when they're built, have an impact. That's what part of paying property taxes and such helps support additional resources if necessary. So, this property, this land is currently as part as the land use. It's been sitting there since twenty, can't remember when the land use map was updated, last updated. But it falls within what was the land use designated for that area. So, we're not moving outside of that land use. So, I don't see any reason why it should be denied, so. Nothing else, sir?
Ma'am?
Some of the comments I've seen are concerned, as am I, about it being a low income, high density. Do you have a comment on that at this point?
I do not, that's not within my realm. I do not address income levels and planning functions.
Ma'am, did you have something? You said not now? Go, please.
Okay, just guess I gotta warm up to this, right? Kind of new for me and all that. So, I had a moment to go back and watch the planning commission. I could feel the energy in the room, there was a lot of people here. That is against rezoning, right?
Yes, sir.
And I listened to their complaints and, and just, you know, and I, I, I really feel like our position here is to make sure the scales are low. And if anyone that had land or had an opportunity to do something, you really don't want the government to intervene, right? I mean, you prefer that not to be the case. And I, and I just kind of, I wanted to think this thing through, and I. But I think our position is to make the best decisions for everyone in our community. And I'll be honest with you, with all the emails that were received, there's a lot of valid information and valid points. And my son works for the high school as a council. And there is a concern about an influx, right? And there should be a concern as far as policing as well. And I don't think we should take anything that was brought forth with the planning commission from the constituents that live in that area, I don't think we should take any of that lightly or dismiss it. We shouldn't do it. They paid a lot of money to build homes in that, that area. And I don't know who owns the land. And it was, it was deemed as agriculture forever, apparently up until now. And, and I get it, right? You got land, you want to sell it, you're in it to make money, you just wish the best, right? But I think, for in the long term, our decision, we need to make a good one. That it impacts our community in a positive way and not in a negative way by any means. And I'd rather be methodical at this point in how we make our decisions. I get it, man, but we got an opportunity to generate some revenue. Does that really benefit the, the community? So, that's, as we think this thing through.
Anything else?
I guess I do have a question, so if this land changes from agricultural to what the future land use map said, which was multi residential, commercial. We don't really get a say in what's done beyond that point, do we? We don't get a say of who's gonna build what there, whether it can be low income, what type of things, is that something we even get a say about?
No, not really, we don't, I mean, they're.
So, and it's not gonna just remain agricultural, correct? I mean, it just can't stay that way forever, unless someone's actually farming it. I just wanted to make that clarification, because sometimes these things come up, and we don't have a choice. And what's gonna go in there, because someone has purchased that land, it's their land to do with what they want to do. And we don't really get a say in that, so just want to make that clear, that sometimes these decisions are hard, and we still have to do what's best for the community.
Anything else, please?
Reading the memo, it says the property would be rezoned, subject to the following stipulations. So if any of these are not met, then the rezoning is off the table. It will remain agricultural.
Correct, or they work through until they do get reviewed or approved. Traffic impact study being one, drainage study being another, things like that have to be reviewed and approved, or it will not move forward, correct?
Some of these infrastructure expenses are gonna be significant.
Yes, they will be, we've had discussions with the developer already, they're, they're aware.
Somewhat aware of what's ahead of them.
Mm-hmm. They know they have work to do, yes.
So has the, they've already purchased the property, or is the property, is that purchase?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, there's probably contingencies behind it, would be my guess, yeah.
It's contingent, okay. So, they're not necessarily gonna be stuck with property that they cannot build on.
If something were to happen, yes, I would not think so.
Has there been any conversations about expanding the neighborhood?
No. The developer of that neighborhood actually has, I'm not sure the acreage, but we'll just say sixty acres that could be developed, and it hasn't moved really out of phase one since two thousand six. Would be my guess, right around there, when Cedar Ridge was initially started, two thousand eight, somewhere around there.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on what Councilwoman Long had said. Just because we want something or don't want something, that we can't take that position. We have to, as has been elaborated on, what is best for the whole community. But I like the idea that we're having to look at police, fire, ambulance, school district, and everything else. No, we're not taking this lightly. But I was told one time, and I think it was probably by Mayor Harrington, he said that if you don't like something, and you vote no on it, best be ready to explain why you voted no, or why you voted yes. And because we don't want something there, or we know somebody that's there, that's a good friend, which there isn't for me. But that's not, that's not a reason. And I do want everybody to know that, because the old saying, you know, not, not in my neighborhood. And I certainly understand that, and people's, the amount of money that they put into their homes and concern about, you know, multifamily. Those are, those are things that may not feel like it's in your particular neighborhood. But we, I do want you to know that we are taking this seriously. And that whatever our vote is, we, we have the reason for that.
Any other questions?
I keep coming up with questions as we talk, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna apologize because I'm interested in the answers.
Yes, please.
So, hypothetically, if the requirements, the stipulations, something doesn't jive, and they're not able to change it to R3, but it might fit into the lower density, or single family, or however that's classified. Can they come back before us and request a change to a different zoning category?
Could be, yes, it could be the case.
There's no limit to the number of times you can flip-flop zones?
No, no, there's not.
Please?
Yes, I might add to, to response to fellow council member McMahon's comments about the development. It's not so much that it's like, hey, look, there's dollars. We live in a time in our society where, several factors. One is, sometimes housing is just not affordable for some individuals. They can't afford to go out and spend three hundred fifty, four hundred fifty thousand dollars on a home. Secondly, there are a lot of younger generation are just, they don't want to be tied down with a mortgage. They don't want to be tied down with maintaining property and cutting grass. They like that mobility of being able to get up and, a couple, three years later, move to another city, move to another town. They just don't want that obligation of being locked in and forced in. So, I don't think that apartments are becoming more and more of the norm. And I know everybody says they hate to see apartments, but it is the norm, and it does provide opportunities. And when we're at a position in our city, I think right now, we're at ninety-eight percent occupancy. 98% occupancy in our city, and there are a lot of people who come to our town, especially teachers at the school. We have firefighters who come, and one of the first things they do is, is there a place, they're fresh out of the academy, fresh out of school, and they're, where can I live? And they find there's no apartments, no place they can live in town. And so they end up having to go across the river or to other communities outside of here, where they love to be here, actually in Bonner. So, it is just providing housing opportunities for individuals.
Very much. Is there any other questions, concerns, or comments from the council? Seeing none. Seeing none. Vote please. Voting on a motion to approve the rezoning of 300 South 130th Street from A1 Agricultural District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District for the eastern portion of 300 South 130th Street. Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
No.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. I would like to make mention, I appreciate everybody's input and their attention to the concerns, so, thank you very much. Onto item number two, Highway K-32 and Kemp Avenue paving project bid solicitation. Staff?
Good evening. Frank A. Burt, Public Works Director. I'm here before you this evening to ask for permission to go ahead and solicit bids. This is a KDOT CCLIP project, which stands for connecting, City Connecting Link Improvement Project. This project was approved by city council, at least the funding was through an agreement with KDOT back in April. And we're at a point now where the design has been completed and approved by KDOT, and we're at a point where we're ready to go ahead and advertise, probably in the November timeframe, open bids in the December timeframe, and then award in January of 2024. So this will be in the 2024 budget. At this point, the funding allows for the first $400,000 of this project to be paid for as a grant from KDOT. Anything in excess of that would be at the expense of the city. Right now, our estimate is about $620,000. So there will be about $220,000, we expect, in cost to the city for this project.
Plus the $40,000 of participation, plus the engineering inspection.
There would have been engineering inspection, and that's coming yet. When we award the project, there'll be, there'll be an award for that.
Do you have a test major down on all of that ancillary?
It's probably going to be $700,000 total.
Of which they'll participate at about $360,000.
No, they'll pay up to 400. Their maximum would be $400,000.
And our 10% doesn't come out of that $400,000?
Yeah, they'll, they'll pay up to $400,000.
So our, our participation will be over that. Okay, thank you.
We pay whatever's over $400,000 at this point on this project, which it used to be $300,000, so it came up 100, so.
$400,000 max, okay.
Answer any questions, any additional questions on this project.
Thank you. Any other staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the Public Works Department to advertise and solicit bids for the Highway 32 Kemp paving project.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments, and I'm lost. We'll start down here, sir?
Nothing here.
Seeing other, other questions or concerns? I appreciate that. Having the state pay at least half of that, or a little more, it sounds like, is a great use of the state's funds. Vote please. Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very good. Thank you. On to item number three, Kansas Avenue culvert project.
Frank A. Burt, Public Works Director. This is a separate project on Kansas Avenue that actually got started about a year ago. This one's all on our dime, unfortunately.
I noticed that.
But essentially, we started out with a replacement of the current culverts that were there, the corrugated metal pipe in a state of failure, and we were going to excavate all that out and put back a structured concrete box culvert. And after we did the work and pursued it with some vendors, we found out that we couldn't get it done in the summer because they were not able to get the supplies and materials that they were going to need to get it done. If you may recall, where this is located, it's going to be, it was really, really critical to have this work done during the summer. School's out, you want to get it done before the buses are running, because you're going to have to close that road. I think it was Councilmember Gurley that was drilling me on exactly how many weeks and days that was going to be closed. And she's absolutely right. It'd be a nightmare. And now this late in the game, if we were trying to do the same thing, we would also be directing traffic. Closing Kansas, that traffic is most likely going to have to go down 138th. It's a high volume of traffic to go down that narrow road. Coupled with the fact that it's likely that a chunk of 138 itself will be under construction at that time. So, we started soliciting other options, and we came up with this one, actually, that KDOT's been a big advocate of, and they've been using. In fact, they've got a couple of them right out here on K-7. We will, we have never used this. I've never even seen this done. So this is really new for us, but it looks like it would be a solution to our problem here. We don't know what it's going to cost, because we've never really done this before, but we think it's probably going to be in the ballpark. It will pretty much eliminate the need to close this road. There may be some ancillary construction things that take place. They may have to close a lane or something during mobilization or during some activities, but for the most part, they can do this under traffic. And we think this is going to work. I mean, it's, it's not like one of those plastic tubes that you can go down, you know, to Lowe's or someplace and buy. These things are actually constructed to design. I mean, the walls on these things are structural. They're very thick. And so, we're very excited about this. We think this is a great solution for this particular roadway with those kind of traffic problems. You close that road, fire, police, ambulance, let alone just the traffic out of Lake Valley and everybody back and forth on Kansas Avenue. So, we don't know what it's going to cost exactly, but we'd like to pursue the same thing. Advertise in November, open bids in December, award in January. So, I'll stop talking, see if anybody's got a question.
Any other staff input? And citizens, questions, concerns? And I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the Public Works Department to solicit formal bids for the Kansas Avenue culvert project.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll start with concerns and questions down here with Mr. Reeves.
I'm not understanding, I'm sure when the construction was actually going to take place then. Was that next spring?
Actually, that's the beauty of this. Once it's awarded, they can do this anytime. Now, the exception to that would be, you know, heavy rain. This is a stormwater thing. You can't, can't do this with two feet of water blowing through here, you know, or three. But in the dead of winter, they can be doing this, so it doesn't disrupt traffic.
And frozen ground doesn't bother them?
Nope.
The, this takes care of the culvert. What about the boxes? Does this also, those linings, are they used in the boxes as well, or are those are-
We don't need to do the boxes.
Okay, the boxes are in good shape then?
That's right. What we, what we are going to do is concrete end walls in order to seal this thing. So they'll be, trying to think of the proper word. End, I call them end units, where they're concrete for, for directing flow.
When I brought it to your attention, I know there was at least one of them, there was some dirt that was collapsing down because of the,
Sure.
You know, it was sinking.
Those can't be reused with this.
What's that?
Those cannot be reused with this. We'll be just replacing those to custom-fit this particular-
But that'll resolve all the issues?
Yes.
Okay, good to hear. And I like the idea that roads not going to get closed down.
Yeah, we do too.
So we're inserting into the existing-
There's two, yeah.
That will make that diameter smaller. Is that going to be a flow issue in any way?
The engineers are saying it will not be, and that's generally because the inside walls of this are absolutely smooth and linear. The inside walls of a standard culvert pipe have friction, and they have corrugated metal. So, they're saying no. Good question, though.
I'm surprised we haven't used this kind of technology more.
Even our consulting engineer has never done this before, so.
These are pre-manufactured, pre-engineered.
We're, we're definitely going to have a couple of guys from KDOT there to go over this stuff when we open it.
They've used it.
Oh, yeah. KDOT's right out-